Give me a ticket.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's out of town.
We ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. It is Monday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Uh, the clerk certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
Call her all, please.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D is the consent agenda. I'm sorry. Item D is changes to the agenda. Anything from staff? Don't see anything. Item E is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. Put a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Good night. Enjoy your dinner. Uh, special business, uh, F one authorize, uh, Danica Panic to utilize more than one residence on a meter. Colin, does anybody have questions on that? Uh, everybody read it in the packet. Okay. You have questions, Colin's available. Otherwise, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I do think it's important, um, if we could memorialize this, uh, in, in a way that, that's clear that this, uh, agreement, if we decide to, uh, share services on one meter, that that agreement runs with the land, not with the parties. Um, I could foresee, uh, instance where someone new to that address is disappointed with level of service and.
Okay. You respond to that, Colin? How does that work?
Yeah, um, Mayor, Councilmember Page. There's, there's nothing specific in code that, that details it like that. Right now, it's really just the meter, downstream of the meter, you can peel off of that and take another service. Um, but you are right that once, once that's done, I, I guess, if you're gonna keep it with the property, we're talking about private property. It's all downstream of the meter. So if somebody chooses to, uh, do something different with it down, like we were talking before, that if you go in and do a lot split and now you have two different homes in there, or you sell a home and, and somebody outside the family purchases it, they at that time, if they want a separate meter, they would, they would have to connect to us. And if the original property owner didn't want them on the meter for whatever reason, that would be a, that would be something they would have to decide on. I don't think the city really wants to get too involved in what happens on the private side of the meter. But, um, I'm not quite sure if that answers your question. I, I'd be more, more than happy to elaborate.
I was just looking for solutions that wouldn't be vexatious to the staff's time in the future when, when this issue has to be reviewed again, or if, if that occurs.
Yeah, I, I think as far as staff time goes, it'd be pretty cut. It, it would be if, if you are not happy with them being on this meter, you as the original property owner would have that decision to make. And I'm, I'm no lawyer. We have him sitting right here. I would assume that they could, at that time, persuade that, uh, new homeowner to tie into a new meter. I, I would think that would be up, that would be their, uh, their right to do that. Since they were the original, uh, service that was with, it was tied, or the original account that was tied to the service.
Well, if there's no other comments or questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, I, I have a question. Is, uh, this would be one probably for, for Charlie, uh, because I think if I'm picking up right, uh, an owner down the road unknowingly gets into a situation, uh, that they don't want to be in, and then there weren't the proper disclosures at the time of sale to indicate that the home they were purchasing was sharing a meter with another residence. That's kind of where you're from. Okay. So, uh, uh, I don't know, uh, why. Is there a reason we couldn't record the authorization for that property detained and recorded under the legal description so it would show up on a title report?
Uh, Mayor, I would defer that question to our, our city attorney.
Well, I have a question, Mayor Council, I have a question for the question before I can answer the question. But is this, I mean, let's anticipate it. Is this gonna be fifty fifty between the two residences? Or, because I, I've seen it where there are problems ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road where one's using more water than the other one, but all of a sudden there's a fight about who's supposed to pay the water bill.
Um, Mayor Council, City Attorney, it's funny that you mentioned that because we, we did deal with this about five or six years ago. We had a property on Adams that the original homeowner did just what is happening right here. They split a service downstream of the meter. Somebody new moved into the home that was the secondary user of this meter. They had a big issue, whatever that issue was. They went over and wanted to cut that line off and not allow them to have water.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I might chime in, in that instance, what had happened is, is the lot had split. And now it was two separate parcels that could be sold individually. And we did not find out about this until some things started to change. In this is instance, you have one parcel that's going to have an accessory dwelling unit on it.
That is correct.
So at, at this time, nobody could buy that second home separate unless they split the lot. Although we would want to prevent the situation that did happen before, if they came in and now split that lot, if they could, and made this two separate units, sell one individually, that's where we would want to protect our interests as the city and the future homeowners.
Mr. Mayor, and so I didn't, I don't think I did a very good job of trying to answer your question. Um, I don't know if we could record something, so it'd be, you know, just be on the title or, or somewhere. I, I, I would think that if the city was willing to consider something like this, I'm always looking for indemnifications for the city. So in case someone comes up like you were just talking about five, ten, fifteen years down the road. I can say on this example, the three of us were just talking about, it turned into, uh, I mean, staff put hours fielding calls. I mean, the city attorney, the public works director, the clerk, we're all working on it based on something that happened years ago. So, uh, is there, I don't know. I'd want to know if there's a compelling reason to grant the request, and I'd also want indemnification for the city. Uh, I'm on the legal side of the house. That's what I would say about it.
Maybe this isn't ripe for a decision tonight. Maybe we gotta get a little more information.
It's allowing.
We've, we've, we've allowed it before, but it's, it's, it's bitterness and, uh, with the ADU, of course, they want to avoid the expense of, you know, uh, installing another separate uh, meter.
What are the rules on lot splitting? I mean, is it, can they even split the lot? And if the answer is no, then I'd see no reason why not to approve it. But if they can't split the lot, then maybe we need to defer.
That, that's one of the reasons I, I think maybe we need to get a little more information because you, you can't create a illegal lot with a lot split, right, Jenna? So depends on the size of the lot, where it can meet the minimums.
Whether it can even be done, and if it can't, then that's all that.
If it's the, if it's an ADU in the spirit of the authors, authorizing legislation uh, from the state to allow ADUs, uh, where they're, you know, they're a little more than another, you know, they're small and, and and presumably wouldn't tax the quote, parent property. But I think we could just kind of flush that out. Uh, and look at, that's, that's an option. If you want to prove it tonight, that's up to you guys. I just, just thought I'd prove that out.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, question for Mr. Wadams and Mr. Schmidt, then what, uh, if we, if we go ahead and, and put this out for a decision at a later time, would, would a date certain of the first meeting in January be too soon?
Uh, Mayor, Council President, not from the legal department, it wouldn't be, um, I can know, um, I can work with Mr. Schmidt to work out on, you know, work on these little points. Uh, if that's okay with.
Yeah, yeah. Mayor Councilmember Page, at, at this point, I don't know if there's in, what the urgency is. I'm not sure if they're ready to start building next week, or I think they're trying to do preliminary just to see first off if this is an option. And by code, it is an option. Um, one thing I would like to address is if there is a lot split, by code, they have to have a separate water meter to each lot. They can share a sewer, but they cannot share water at that point. So.
So they'd be forced to connect.
It would be forced to connect. That, that's correct. Yes. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
But, but again, I would like to reiterate that we would have to know about it. Sometimes in, in going back to the example that we were giving you, that was done many, many, many years ago, probably back in the seventies. So I, I'm not sure how much oversight there was at that point. Um, no blame is being given, just we're a little more diligent now when it comes to lot splits, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we table this for a decision, uh, day certain, January eighth.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mister, I, I want to ensure that, um, part of the research that I heard is that Mr. Wadams will be researching the indemnification requirements for the city. Did I hear that correctly?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, I have standard wording for indemnification. Who, I'm gonna go to the applicant or the requestor and say, uh, you know, from the legal department, would you be willing to sign this thing? And then I can report back to Mayor and Council at the next council meeting and have, hopefully have it all packaged up, ready to go.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that would be a recorded document.
We can record it. Yeah. How, how hard or easy it is to find on a title search, I don't know, but we can record it.
Yeah, at least it's there. Okay, all right. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F two, uh, okay, this is our vote canvassing. Um, this is, um, essentially acknowledging that we received the canvassing document from the county and the election results. Uh, have been certified by the county. And I think the action is, uh, we acknowledge that we received the same.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, in accordance with Idaho Code, uh, section fifty-two, four, one, two, I move that we enter the results of, of the vote and to the minutes of the meeting and proclaim the vote to be final.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Just to be clear, the motion was for, in accordance with Idaho Code fifty dash four twelve.
I'm sorry, did I get that wrong?
I think you said fifty-two.
My apologies. I'll amend that motion. Uh, I move that in accordance with Idaho Code fifty dash four, one, two, we enter the results of the voting in the minutes of, of the meeting and proclaim the vote to be final for the election held on November seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second. You've got a motion and a second. I'm gonna amend the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, item F three. Authorizing, uh, me to, uh, confirming my appointment of Russ Heller to the Garden City Library Board of Trustees effective on January ninth, twenty twenty-four. Filling a vacancy through June of twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve, um, your authorization of that appointment. Um, I enthusiastically endorse Mr. Heller. Um, I was lucky enough to, uh, have him be part of my campaign and, uh, his organization and many other, many, many other skills will make him a, a great candidate for this position.
I would second.
Great, thank you. Um, got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller.
I didn't know I got to vote on this. Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank, thank you for your willingness to serve. Um, I attended a trustee meeting, uh, and of course, Russ has been our liaison of the library as a council member. And thinking that this had all been pre-arranged with him, I mentioned it at the library meeting. I think he, that surprised him just a little bit maybe, but, but anyway. But he, he stuck with us on that, so. Uh, item F four, uh, this is, uh, an action to counsel our December twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three council meeting.
I so moved.
This is second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item G one, this is a first reading of ordinance four, or ten forty-one dash twenty-three. Um, and is, is detailed in the, uh, agenda. Jenna, do we need to hear from you? Ms. Thornborough, being.
Mayor members of the council. Um, I'm not sure that you actually need to hear from me. Um, the, at the last meeting, the rezone application was heard. Um, and that's file number zero and fiscal year twenty twenty-three, number two. Um, included in that, or in order to approve that rezone, um, the, the ordinance that's associated with that, uh, needs to be read presumably by three readings. That's what I understood at the last meeting, that you weren't going to, uh, suspend the rules and adopt. Um, also in your packet, packet is the development agreement, uh, that was discussed, uh, during that um, hearing. It's been, uh, massaged just slightly, um, to address the matters at hand that were discussed uh, specifically. Um, that is, um, items number three, four, three and four predominantly. Um, the city attorney, the applicant and development services um, have worked together and are proposing the language that is in your packet tonight. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions with Ms. Thornborough? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I give a quick, uh, follow-up to that?
Certainly.
Just to make sure the councils, where, uh, the legal memos, I'm starting on page seventy-nine, uh, going through just the legal issues with the development agreements generally and, uh, rezone ordinances generally. Specifically though, uh, starting on page four of my memo, and Ms. Thornborough talked about it, but I talked about it specifically, um, and that's on pages four and five of my memo, which would be, uh, what, eighty-one, eighty-two of your packet. Talks about specific terms, uh, that we've talked to the Talbets about, and I think we negotiated it with staff and the chief of police and development services and legal and everything. Uh, but we, uh, you know, staff did have some general concerns. Love the project from a staff perspective, love the project from a legal perspective, but, um, we're, had some concerns. We needed to fair it out regarding noise and, um, outdoor consumption of alcohol. Brought that up at the last council meeting. I think, uh, what's proposed here, uh, and again, I specify on page four and five of my memo, I, I think it gets the job done and takes care of this, of the city's interest. And I think it's also fair to the Talbets, then they could obviously speak to that themselves. But uh, if the council remembers this is a big project, uh, that, you know, they're gonna have a public plaza on a portion of it, um, it's a big project with a lot of moving parts, including alcohol beverage control, um, the legislature, so on and so forth. Um, but I think these conditions are reasonable. Um, and hopefully the council likes them. Thank you.
Great. Uh, any, uh, questions before we address the first reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, just to clarify, really the only publicly owned land is the Greenbelt, correct?
Yeah.
Publicly owned. It's just the Greenbelt.
Uh, that is correct. Nathan Talbot, representing Vida Properties, P O Box four, uh, seventeen forty-three Boise, Idaho, eight three seven oh one. Uh, that is correct. Councilman Jacobs, it is just the Greenbelt.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. The matter before us is, uh, the first reading of ordinance ten forty-one dash twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move for the court to read ordinance ten forty-one dash twenty-three by title only to constitute the first reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm hate, I hate to interrupt this roll call, uh, but the Talbets, we're gonna make a request and they, they're eyeballing me like they still want.
Oh.
So I.
Okay.
We would not interrupt a roll call. I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you for that, uh, Attorney Waddums. Um, we would like to request the permission to suspend the, uh, required number of three readings for the ordinance ten dash forty-one dash four, uh, twenty-three, being that the understanding this is the last meeting or, or council meeting that we'll be having in the year of twenty-three and in this month, and we're, we're looking anxiously to start up development here come the beginning of twenty-four. And so with that being said, we'd like to present that request to council members, Mayor Evans and.
Okay. Well, I'll query the council and we'll see what they want to do. Uh, in this instance, uh, the three reading, uh, protocol would allow us to, time to work out, uh, any issues between the first reading and the third reading. Um, council's happy with the development agreement and accepts the good cause for suspending the rules, then we have the opportunity to do that as well.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, uh, Stiles, just one question. So the three readings don't preclude you from doing anything in terms of continuing with the development, right?
Uh.
So you mentioned like you wanna, you wanted, you said you want to suspend the three readings so that because development's gonna entwined to make force kick in. But this doesn't preclude you from doing any work on, on the boardwalk at all in terms of.
Not the boardwalk space.
To pick it up before February, our first meeting, February.
Well, so not, this doesn't really focus specifically on the boardwalk. Within this DA agreement, we've got at least four other projects within that vicinity that does, uh, encompass within this DA agreement. And the, within those four, uh, four projects, we are looking to start, um, doing work and development on that side that does involve kind of speeding up the, the reading process of this DA agreement. And maybe Mike.
I guess my question, does this agreement, does not having all three readings done prevent you from the development side of it? I mean, it doesn't prevent you from developing, it just prevents you from having a musical event or serving alcohol.
So I'm gonna defer to Mike here to.
I guess that's.
Answer that further.
Yeah, the speeding it up, it, it does, my understanding, it doesn't prevent you from continuing construction and developing and doing on any property. So you, I guess the question is, is, you know, having the readings gets time for public input or, or whatever. Are you planning to have events and things that would be affected by the development agreement before January, the second meeting in January, which would be the third meeting by my path? I guess. So why, 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 why is there requests?
Okay, um.
Uh, name it, name and address, please.
Sorry, sorry. Mike Talbot with Vita Properties, seventeen forty-three Bannock, Boise, um, councilman, members of council, mayor, the, the answer to the question, Councilman Jacobson, is really regarding the planning for our retail side. There are conditions to which that if these were not approved or were modified, we would be misrepresenting to our tenants in the way they're planning for their licensing and their ability to sign a lease with us and move forward. Hours of operation, liquor, public plaza. So there's components that have to do with the operational side of our development as well as the development of the other parcels that we are gonna start in earnest.
Thank you for clarifying.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Jacobs, just for clarification. Um, you made a comment and I want to make sure I'm in alignment and understand that this is not open to any further public comment. The, the only, um.
Had the, we had the public hearing.
The only thing that it allows is for to ensure our staff has time to flush out any other legalese or language that may need to be brought in. Is that correct?
Is that a question?
Yeah. Is that correct?
That sounds like a question. Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen and Jacobs, uh, looks, the ordinance looks like it's on the standard template. The development agreement looks to be on the standard template. Uh, I have no legal reason to delay this, I don't think. Typically, you'd want three readings when we're working out small details or, um, that there were some legal issues we had to look into, or something like that. I don't see any of those issues on this particular project. I agree with that. Thank you.
Hey? Anything, any further questions at council? Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to withdraw my prior motion for the first reading.
Hey, this is second.
I would second.
Oh, the second agrees to withdraw. You're just withdrawing your.
I was the second, right?
Yes.
Yes, I agree to withdraw my motion.
Okay, motion's withdrawn. Uh, is there a substitute motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, having heard compelling reason for, um, expediting this, I now move to, uh, suspend the rules and, um, for Madam Clerk to read ordinance ten forty-one dash twenty-three. Uh, an ordinance by the city of Garden City by title only. After which, uh, we will, uh, make another motion.
Okay.
Second.
Hey, we've got a motion and a second, uh. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Ordinance ten forty-one dash twenty-three, an ordinance by the city of Garden City and municipal corporation, providing for the rezone of certain real property described herein from R three medium density residential and C two general commercial to C two slash D A general commercial with a development agreement amending the zoning map of the city of Garden City to reflect said change, providing for separability, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Hey, thank you. Ms. Thornborough, do you have something we need to hear before we proceed?
Mayor, yes, um, and members of the council, I'm just up here to, to, um, make sure that you're aware that the decision document for the rezone also needs to be approved tonight, then.
Okay, um, can that be incorporated in a motion to suspend and adopt, or do you want a separate motion?
Um, separate motion.
Separate motion? Okay, so, uh, perhaps, uh, the order would be to, um, um, adopt the findings, fact and conclusions of law prior to a motion right to suspend the rules.
Mr. Mayor, just for a brief moment, let me review the packet. Is there someone that can point me to the draft decision?
For the record, that's Z O N F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two.
Moving on.
Sixty-eight.
Yep, sixty-eight. And this is the rezone. Unless it's the ordinance.
That's the ordinance.
There is a link. It's a circuitous, um, mayor members of the council, it's going to be circuitous to get there. There is a link in the packet on page forty-nine of the packet. And I'm also happy to share this, um, on Zoom if you'd like.
Let me just open this in a new tab.
If anyone's relying on me.
Um, sorry. Um, sorry. Oh, yes.
Draft decision.
Yes. Yep. I have, I have reviewed this, uh, have uh each of the council members had a chance to review this?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I move to, uh. Approve the findings of fact, conclusions of law and recommendations of zone F Y twenty-twenty-three. Dash zero-zero-zero-two.
Hey.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? We're now on the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen, or no, sorry, Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, um. Did, did the motion include to adopt in the affirmative? The language of the.
The, the D A is part of the ordinance, right, Mr. Waddums?
Yes, Your Honor, the, the development agreement, or, Mr. Mayor, the development agreement is part of the ordinance, so there should be a motion to uh. Suspend the rules, adopt and publish the ordinance, and then there should be a motion uh to approve the, this, the. Findings back conclusions of law decision that's under it, so one's that ordinance number and one's its own number.
So we just did the zone.
Correct, so then we should do the or, uh, motion or the ordinance.
Okay, but I think Councilmember Jorgensen's question is that, does that pick up the, do those pick up the development agreement?
Yes, because the development agreement is attached to the order.
The language, it's in our packet.
Correct.
And the, the draft decision.
Correct.
Yeah.
Has both, um, does meet and does not meet, and we are proposing to approve the draft findings.
Yes.
Fact in the affirmative.
In the affirmative. Yes.
That's right, yes.
Yes.
That's how I understood the motion.
Good, good clarification.
That is good clarification, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, that was uh the intent of the, the moving party.
Okay, uh, so now we're down to the ordinance itself.
Uh, so, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I move to suspend the rules and uh adopt and publish ordinance. Um, Z O N F Y twenty-twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-two.
Now, the ordinance numbers.
Oh, ten forty-one dash twenty-three.
Yep.
Yeah, excuse me.
No, it's second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing on the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yeah.
Hey, um, motion carries. That's it. Yeah, no, you're welcome to stay, we'll, we'll be finished in a couple hours.
Good luck with that baby on the day I had Christmas.
Um, we don't have any unfinished business.
Thank you, Lord, I, I just wanna thank all the period of operations for this last three years. I think you guys have done our best to do everything, correct, and I know Mike's working hard to, to keep. The mayor and everybody informed of, of our intentions, but we just think, uh, thank you for that, and we're just happy to be a big part of Garden City.
Well, we're happy to have you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, next item uh on the agenda is uh new business, and this is a. Um, briefing council on our Garden City Purchasing Policy Manual Update. It's a discussion item, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, wanted to bring, oh.
Ms. Libby?
I answered to a lot of things. Uh, just wanted to bring before you for a quick discussion and let you know some of the items we're working on updating policies. The purchasing policy will be one of the first ones we'll bring before you, uh, from a, by, by a resolution at a future meeting. Um, as the economy changes and prices go up. The limits of the purchasing policy are, become adjusted by the state, and then we want to be. In alignment with the state code when it comes to purchasing, so you'll see an increase in the items for bidding when bidding is required. Uh, the different types of bidding that might be required, and this really impacts Collins Department the most with public works. Uh, there's some very specific rules that need to be followed, and so we wanna bring those limits up. Uh, the other items that are a little unique to Garden City, we will be increasing slightly. The limits of when a department head can sign off on a purchase from five thousand to ten thousand. When the mayor can sign off on a purchase and when something needs to come to the city council. We also wanted to memorialize a practice that we have in place. When the council approves a budget, for example, uh, we approved a budget that would include two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for four police cars. We will not be bringing those individual purchases back to you as a council, we will take the approval of the budget as approval by the council. So that when Corey is ready to make a purchase, we don't have to bring that back each time. Um, specific items, again, with public works, may come back to you because we need to award a bid. We may not have known exactly at the time when we did the budget what that was gonna be, so we will bring those specific items back, but. Really, this, this plan or this policy follows state code, um, I did. Uh, borrow the formatting from the city of Meridian and was able to minimize the workload by going through their existing policy and, and. Tweaking it to Garden City's needs, um, so really, we don't need anything from you tonight from an action item, but if you have questions. Or comments you'd like to make, I know this is the first time you're seeing it. So we'll continue to work on this and bring it back to you at a future time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Libby, if I may, a quick question, uh, so, given our. Our history of the past two and a half, three years, wou- would there be a mechanism? For instance, if the, the budget is approved for X amount of dollars, the, the purchase order is issued, there's a back order. By the time the back order is to be fulfilled, there's been a price increase. Would that trigger reverting back to the council for review?
I, I would say yes, if, if it falls over the allotted budget amount, if, again, for example, if, if Corey was approved for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in cars. Now, all of a sudden, it's going to run two hundred and forty thousand, that is something I think we would wanna bring back to the council. Uh, not only from a budget standpoint, but from an approval standpoint, because we know you approved this amount, now we're going to go over.
And, and this is just a matter of curiosity, uh, and Mr. Waddums may need to weigh in on this. Regarding purchases, are we now including language that allows us to uh respond or react to. Pandemic epidemics, whatever that may be, because typically, I think, um, a lot of orders, purchase orders. Are binding unless there's a force majeure, and we're seeing that language kind of come in, although it is not a force majeure. Are we including that in our purchase orders, or has the state updated or approached that at all?
Not, not that I'm aware of, um. I'm trying to think of an instance where we would be out of that number, um.
So, so as an example, I'll use my industry.
Yeah.
There's a supply disruption due to the pandemic, we couldn't deliver on certain purchase orders for an extended period of time. Use, customers wanna come in council because they could go find it, source it somewhere else. Uh, that's the type of scenario that I would, I, I'm concerned about.
Right.
We need to have the ability to go someplace else if the product or service is available and where we issued the P O. Is only impacted because of.
Right.
A disruption that is beyond our control, beyond a supplier or manufacturer.
Right, a- and in the instance of most of the items we purchased, and again, kind of going back to the police cars. We wouldn't even issue a, a P O until we know that that's what we're buying. Um, we generally don't issue them, we really don't issue purchase orders much at all unless the vendor requires it, yeah, Corey may be able to help. We are ready to make a purchase and they said we need a P O, okay, here you go, but we don't generally do that in advance now. I'll let Corey talk a little more.
There's another example, of course, I T technology was a classic, desktops, laptops, everything became scarce. And, and it was very difficult to source anything, and people were going to, you know, refurb's whatever aftermarket and. And again, the original purchase order wanted to fold the cu- customers' binding to that original P O, but yes.
So, the only thing I've ever used the P Os for is cars, and that's just happened this year, so in the past, we'd get an estimate. They'd say this is what the car's gonna cost, the mayor would sign off on it and we'd order them, so this year, the, all the manufacturers, we have to have a P O number. So we got the P O for the Tahos, and the day the, some of the equipment we got for him, got drop shipped, they said, hey, by the way, you didn't get the Tahos. Cause Chevy only gave twenty-three-hundred out of thirty thousand requested, so that P O was canceled already. We, they said we can get Durangos and we just did a P O that, that same day for Durango's, so we knew exactly, once the bid was in. Exactly how much, get the mayor to sign off on the purchase order request and then issue the P O.
Uh, I will add that if it involves a critical, a piece of equipment that is critical to our operations. Uh, then there are certain provisions under which, uh, we can make an emergency purchase. So, uh, but those are, uh, those are the specific circumstances, and generally, they occur. If we declared an emergency, uh. Uh, but in, in an instance, if you mentioned the pandemic, if we needed, uh. If we had to have a P P E and we couldn't get it through a, a normal channel. Uh, we needed it in a volume that exceeded the, it required three bids and all of that stuff. Uh, if it's an emergency, then. Um, then that's something that if it meets the criteria, we, we could take care of that. Uh, if it's to replace a computer and we just can't get it, and then we operate with our old computers. So, uh, cars, we can keep driving them, you know, we just have to, we just have to fix them, so. But I think this would cover our normal operating scenarios, and if we have an abnormal circumstance that comes up, then. You know, we'd have to review that and get counsel and then go out on listserv and what are you doing and, and. Also, uh, some of the items we purchase, uh, have been a bit out. Uh, on state bids that we can piggyback on or some other, uh, um, effort that another. Another governmental entities, uh, undertaken, uh, and that's, uh, cars is a good example, somebody gets the bid. And we can piggyback on that, so we aren't plowing that ground. There have been instances, uh, when we've been able to do better than the state bid, and if that or, uh, covers. If that arises, of course, we, we do that, and I think that can happen. You know, on, on any other type of vehicle, admin vehicles or whatever, sitting here looking at Corey's, just make sure I'm not.
And we did add language in the policy that, that says this, the city may, may use the, the state. For that exact reason, we have had instances where we were able to get better pricing than the state contract.
Yeah, over history, our police cars were purchased on state bid, most of the time, so.
No, thank you, that, it, honestly, it was just questions out of curiosity.
Sure, yeah, no, that's a good question.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Libby, um. This draft policy, does it represent a significant departure from our prior policy? Or, uh, I heard you say that maybe this was an, and that, and adaptation from the city of Meridian, um. Or, or is it simply the, the numbers in the purchase categories that have changed?
The, the major changes are gonna be in the limits, the process for bids have not changed, whether it's. You can go out and, and solicit three people, three companies, or you have to publish two notices in the paper, receive sealed bids. Those actions haven't changed, just those limits of when you have to go out for bid. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Again, this is an information item, it'll come back to us, it'll give you an opportunity to read through it, and uh, any questions answered? Uh, you have to read quickly, Councilmember Heller?
Yes. I can do that.
And of course, uh, be sure to contact Lisa if you have questions as you look through this. Uh. Mr. Waddums, uh, do we need an executive session?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think we need one, but we're prepared for a very short one, just as an update.
I have one item, uh, that would fall under, um. Yeah, under, uh, seventy-four-two-oh-six-one-F, that I wanted to bring up, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four dash two-oh-six-one-F, I move that we move into executive session to communicate with council for the public agency. Um, on these issues that may involve litigation.
Uh, and after which we'll adjourn. Okay, yeah.
And after which, we will adjourn that, will we return, will we need to return?
Uh, no, cause there's been some updates.
Okay, after which we'll, we will, uh. Adjourn without a decision being made.
I would second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion, hearing on the clerk call roll?
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, thank you to those that have joined us online, uh, we'll be moving into executive session and. Uh, the meeting will adjourn as soon as we come out without any action taken, uh. Good evening and Merry Christmas.